Good evening, I'd like to vote for you to be at the September 26th, 2019 Board of Education meeting, in the City of Linden, please rise and apply please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Statement of adequate notice.
According to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On January 7th, 2019, notice was sent to the Holmness Tribune, Star Ledger, local source, and the clerk of the municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein, as is allowed in our regularly scheduled monthly board meeting, under the sunshine law.
Roll call please.
Ms. Gilliam.
I just need to.
Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. Kozak.
Excuse me.
Mrs. Manganiello.
Yes.
Mr. Shahada.
Here.
Mrs. Beviano.
Present.
Mrs. Birch.
Here.
Mr. Gargano.
Here.
Mr. Martuzzi.
Oh, here. Uh, the total of minutes from last meeting. Motion to approve the minutes from last meeting?
Second.
Roll call please.
Ms. Johnson, abstain. Mrs. Manganiello.
Yes.
Mr. Shahada.
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
Yes.
Mr. Gargano.
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi.
Uh, yes. Uh, super superintendent, please.
Uh, yes, Mr. Martuzzi. Uh, just want to let everyone know, we had a very successful opening to the school year for our staff and 6,200-plus students that we have in district. I think that everyone's settled into the new year now. Over the course of the last three weeks, we also had our Baptist School Nights at all of the schools. It was great to see so many parents and guardians and family members, uh, that they came in to meet the teachers and experience a part of their child's day, so we thank you for coming out for that. Our sports and activities are fully underway throughout the district, and our before and after care programs are thriving. Uh, I would like you to please take a look at our newsletter this month, it's up front if you have a chance. Uh, it has a new book entitled, it's #WomenCelebrate, and the reason for that is this publication is designed to celebrate all of the achievements of our students, staff, and our district, so make sure you have a chance to take a look at that and all the great things. And don't forget to check out our Facebook and our Twitter feeds, because there are always great news about what's going on in our schools and what our students are doing. And just talking about that, on social media, our very own Gary Miller, that we're used to seeing all over the place. Uh, Mr. Miller is not with us tonight, and the reason is because he's accepting an award. He submitted, it's called the New Jersey School Public Relations Association, and some of his pieces were submitted for awards. He had no idea what awards he was receiving until tonight, and he just sent me a text a little while ago. He received three awards. Uh, took second place for the Best Electronic Newsletter, which is our #WomenCelebrate. Third place for some photography, and third place for Media Relations with Features in Writing. So congratulations to our own Mr. Miller. He's down in Brunswick at the award ceremony. Um, some of you may have heard about the Future Ready Initiative as well. That is an initiative that is supported by the New Jersey School Boards Association and Department of Education, and we are very proud to announce, actually, we had two schools receive bronze. It was McManus and Linden High School. This year, we had more schools apply, and we are proud to announce that schools 1, 4, 5, 8, and Soul have all achieved bronze level for Future Ready, and that the high school went on to the next level and received their silver award. So I'd like to congratulate all of them and the teams that worked so hard on putting the materials together and submitting for that. It just means that we are really keeping up with our 21st century skills and preparing our students for the future and what they need to have. And I just would also like to say that today, our Human Resources Department, along with our staff, we represented the Linden Public Schools at the Linden First Career Fair, that's sponsored by the mayor and the City of Linden Council. Uh, we are proud to say that we participate in this every year, and today, our team met with over 100 individuals to discuss potential job opportunities in the Linden School District. So hopefully, we'll have some new people coming onboard from meeting them today. And, uh, before I wrap it up here, I think we have a few people in the audience that I would like to recognize. Um, and I'm going to take a walk down there.
Uh, I'd like to go.
Is that okay? All right. All right, so, I think we have a few celebrities in the house today. Where are our superstars from McManus? LJ and Santi. I'm sure that many of you have seen this in the newspapers and on TV, and we've even had it on our website, you saw that, it's been running on our Linden Public Schools website. But, uh, we have Luis Aponte and Santiago Almora is with us, both seventh graders from McManus Middle School, and they are superstars right now, because they represent Linden on the Almora Troopers, who made it to the Little League World Series in Williamsport, Pennsylvania this year, so... We're very proud to have them there. Um, it was a lot of exciting and a huge summer for them, they had parades and all kinds of autograph signing, and, uh, now they know what it's like to be a celebrity. Uh, but I did want to find out a little bit about them today, so I had Mr. Happel call them in. I hope he didn't think you were getting in trouble when he got called into the office. But, uh, just so we get to know a little bit about them, so, we asked, LJ said he started playing baseball when he was seven years old, and he said his best moment at the World Series was the first time walking up the hill and also signing the autographs for people. And his goal this whole year is to improve in all areas, so that's LJ. And Santi said he started playing baseball when he was five years old in the Almora Little League. He said his best moment at the World Series was when they gave him the equipment, bags, gloves, and batting gloves, and all that stuff, and his goal this year is to make honor roll with As and Bs. So we just wanted to recognize you tonight, because you make us very proud. Um, this is a huge accomplishment to be able to say that you participated in the Little League World Series, um, on, you know, any level of that. It's just, uh, and I hope you know that how proud we are of your accomplishments, and we hope that you continue to be doing good things for us in the district, we're very proud. Thank you.
It was the best experience of my life, and I wouldn't trade it for a long time.
It was the best thing that could have happened to me.
Mr. Martuzzi, our board president, Mr. Gargano will present them with their awards. Oh, we don't have to. And, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving to, uh, return to report tonight, to move right into the education committee reports. Uh, Ms. Manganiello, education please.
Thursday, September 19th, the education committee met and discussed all of the items thoroughly. The education committee, upon recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools and the acting assistant superintendent, presented the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Item 1 through 32, I respectfully ask for a second.
Second. Roll call please.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes, on all abstain on item 12, uh, with the date of August 29th, item 12 and 10.
Mrs. Manganiello.
Yes.
Mr. Shahada.
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
Yes.
Mr. Gargano.
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi.
Uh, yes. Uh, personal finance, um, Mr. Gargano.
Hi, before asking for motion, I just want to go over on page 68 and page 69. There are two additions, number 61 and 62, for all by members to look over before going on. Uh, 69 is to appoint, um, power professionals within the school district, 1, 2, and 3. And then 62 is to appoint a substitute power professional in the school district. Now, everybody's aware of that. Personal Finance Committee, upon the recommendations of interim superintendent of schools, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval, items 1 through 62, and ask for a second.
Second.
Roll call please.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes, on all abstain on all, item stated 8, 29, uh, number 4, item 5, 12, 14, 18, and 15.
Mrs. Manganiello.
Yes.
Mr. Shahada.
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
Yes.
Mr. Gargano.
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi.
Uh, yes. Buildings Round Security, uh, Ms. Johnson, please.
Finance, Mr. President.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, Finance, I'm sorry. Uh, we tend before we go for approval, I'll just run that right now on page 76. Item number 25 has been added on due to negotiations that we're talking about with the, um, police department for our football games, just read that over, make sure you understand everything, and if you have any questions. Okay. The Finance Committee, upon recommendations of the business administrator or secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval, numbers 1 to 25, and ask for a second.
Second. Roll call please.
Ms. Johnson.
Uh, yes, on all abstain on item number 20, uh, with my name.
Mrs. Manganiello.
Yes, to all abstain on number 20 only for my name.
Mr. Shahada.
Uh, yes, to all abstain from, uh, med on number 20.
Mrs. Beviano.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
Abstain 13, 14, number 20, my name, and number 25.
Mr. Gargano.
Uh, yes, to all abstain, my name, on number 20.
Mr. Martuzzi.
Uh, yes. Uh, Buildings Round Security, Ms. Johnson.
The Building Round Security Committee, upon recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools and the business administrator or secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Items 1, 2, 9, and ask for a second.
Second.
Roll call please.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes, on all abstain on item number 1.
Mrs. Manganiello.
Yes.
Mr. Shahada.
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
Yes.
Mr. Gargano.
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi.
Uh, yes.
Planning Policy, please, uh, Ms. Manganiello.
The Planning Policy Committee, upon recommendation of superintendent of schools, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Item 1, second reading for policy number 5118, titled Non-Residence, change to reflect trimesters at the elementary level. For policy number 6145, extra curricular activities, change to reflect updated NJSIAA requirements. Added as a definition for warning if a student is in danger of failing one subject. Item 1, respectfully ask for a second.
Second. Uh, roll call please.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Manganiello.
Yes.
Mr. Shahada.
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
Yes.
Mr. Gargano.
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi.
Uh, yes. Uh, Athletic Committee, Mr. Gargano.
Uh, Athletic Committee, upon recommendation of interim superintendent of schools and the acting superintendent, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval, item number 1, and ask for a second.
Second. Roll call please.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Manganiello.
Yes.
Mr. Shahada.
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
Yes.
Mr. Gargano.
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi.
Uh, yes. Athletic Committee, Mr. Gargano.
I'm just going to continue on athletics, got a little summary on our report from this, uh, beginning of the school year. Um, with sports sorted back up again, I'm going to start off with the varsity football team. Currently, they have a record of 0-3, they've had, um, three tough losses on their record so far this year, going up against one team ranked in the top 20, and, uh, close nail powder this past week. Um, also, our JV football team is 1-0. They had a standout win against a phenomenal program of Donovan Catholic, and they look to regain some more wins in the future. Um, our freshman football team, unfortunately, 0-2 this year. The boys have been working very hard in increasing their abilities and understanding of the game, and working to move up to varsity and JV in the future. Um, our middle school football team suffered a loss unfortunately, but they're doing a good job of running the basics, running able to play these and using their athletic abilities to push them forward. Um, our girls tennis team at the high school is currently 1-7. The girls are playing some really close matches and improving throughout the season, which is really good, with their progress within the sport. Um, our varsity soccer team is currently 2-8. Um, they had a big win against JP Stevens, which they won 6-1 recently. Um, our JV boys soccer team is 3-2 and 3. The boys are working hard and are very focused on winning this season, and, um, the team works well together and look forward to the county tournament going forward. Um, our freshman boys soccer is 1-3 and 1. They're winning their first game of the season in a 1-0 victory. Uh, they fought back over their next games, even though they were down 0-2, to, uh, bring them even with a tie in that game. Um, our varsity girls soccer team is currently 1-7. The Linden girls soccer team is currently working hard at competing very, very competitive within their different matches that they have throughout the county. Um, our JV girls is currently 0-7, they're trying their hardest with their practice, they're trying to get back on track. Um, our girls and boys cross-country teams are led by senior Nelly Topid and Hunter Cromwell, who have been off to a great start this season. And our girls country team have had great performance from Bernie McGee class to meet, um, we're looking for a good performance at the Bernie McGee class meet on 9/21. That did very well. Um, our cheerleading team has 16 participants this year, including a male cheerleader, who is really helping them out very well this season. Um, our Soul and McManus cheerleading teams, both are having very good seasons as well, with everybody on. Um, going into McManus Middle School, uh, their soccer season started going forward by this challenging start over. The players have continued to build and improve throughout each game and then each of their practices. Um, our Soul team is 0-3. Um, they're a very young team, but they have a lot of skill that they've been showing throughout throughout their first games and practices, which is very good for them in the future. Um, our girls varsity volleyball team is 4-4 currently, and had a big win recently against Roselle Catholic. Um, our girl JV volleyball team is doing really well, they're at 6-2 right now, and the team is starting the 2019 campaign strongly with these wins, and continue to look forward to that with the future. Um, our girls freshman volleyball team currently this year is 1-4, and the team consists of 15 players and one manager, and these girls, um, have no prior volleyball experience, and they're learning on the fly, and they look to, uh, push forward with the future. And, um, lastly, our margin band, this had one competition so far this year where they won their group, uh, Group 1A. Also, actually, had higher scores than the Group 10 at the meet, which is really good, and they also have two competitions this weekend. Thank you.
Okay, uh, so, we had a delegate report that, uh, Ms. Jude, which is out tonight. Do we wait, it's not happening last night, so, uh, we'll carry over to the next, uh, meeting. Okay. And at this time, any board members who have any comments, uh, to the audience, uh, please raise your hand, yes.
Uh, first I want to speak to is the football security issue. I know our athletic director, Mr. Viera, has been on the phone every day with the police department, working, getting extra security at the games. What is happening is troubling, and we know that, so the police department is going to ramp up, you know, the security there, to ensure the student staff and, you know, the attendance are safe. Uh, also, we want to talk about back to school nights. Uh, thank you to Mr. Walters and Ms. Cleary for the divide and conquer, they were at every building every night. Uh, thank you to the principals for welcoming us to their buildings, the teachers for staying late, and custodians for staying late and cleaning up. I know this is a hard time of the year for everybody, and a lot going on, and just thank you for having us, everything was fantastic.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes. Uh, I'm Marianne from Interration.
I would also like to address back to school nights, the start of the year. Um, I was very happy to be able to attend a few of our elementary schools, and Linden High School last night. Um, I would, again, also like to commend our wonderful teaching staff and administrative staff and support staff for a wonderful job, and also, I'd like to commend our PTA, our PTA moms are out there and working hard, and I'd like to, you know, applaud you for that. Um, and here at Linden High, I have to say, I was very impressed. Uh, I'd like to give a shout out to our principal, Ms. Torry, because the kids that were working here last night were unbelievable. They were at every doorway, at every stairwell, and they, there was no way you could get lost, it was tremendous school, because I couldn't believe how large and amazalike it is, and, uh, it was just, it was just so easy to get from one place to the other. Everybody was very pleasant, uh, the kids had great spirit, and, uh, again, I just want to say, you know, thank you, and, um, uh, good luck to the start of the new year.
Thank you, Thorsia.
I'd like to say welcome back to everyone, and especially our students, and I wish you a very successful school year. Thank you to all of the principals that invited us out to the back to school nights. Uh, they were wonderful, it was great for us to be able to go into the buildings and, uh, meet the new staff, and, uh, see parents and students and, you know, and their setting. Uh, so I'd like to congratulate our two all-stars, and hopefully, they'll remember us when they make the major leagues. And, uh, a great big thank you to our PTA as well. They are the backbone of our fundraising for all of the activities that our students do, and they do do a lot of great things, so thank you very much. And, um, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Thorsia.
I have a couple of, like, so, I'm just going to dig right in. Um, I attended, I attended the Union County School Boards Association meeting last night, and, um, there was a few topics of discussion. Dr. Faumstein, he's the executive director of the New Jersey School Boards, he discussed, um, after the Pawpont shooting, the tragedy. Um, school boards, um, with, um, the administrators, superintendents, social workers, principals, board members, they convened and, um, they created a task force on mental health. Um, and some of the facts was, I put, did you know that 16% of students have considered suicide? And, um, 20%, 13-18-year-olds live with a mental health disorder. So they released a study earlier this year, it was available on the New Jersey School Boards website. Um, and the study is called Building a Foundation for Hope. It includes 73 recommendations on strategies for school districts to consider on social, emotional learning. They also created a nine-minute video that captures the essence of the report, so, and that's also available on the, um, website. And then there was a presentation by, um, Cameron Dunn, she's the Union County interim executive business, county business official, and then, uh, BB Taylor, she's the director and county treasurer of the county. Um, they did an information session on, um, budget process with Board of Education, and, um, overall district security plans for student staff and administrators, and even, uh, board members. And they, um, also spoke about training for staff, uh, support staff, as well as board members. And, uh, the school boards, um, they're having a, uh, what is it? A briefing for school board candidates, and that's, um, October 2nd, 7 to 9, so if anybody's interested in going, who's running for the board, you know, you're welcome to attend. Um, and you know what, they also spoke about the role of a board member, which was legal requirement, the background checks, financial dispostion, so forth. And then, uh, I know it's lengthy, I'm sorry, but, um, we also received legislative updates and, um, a visit from Assemblyman, uh, Bramlin. And, um, he stated that he would be more than happy to come and do a Q and A session for us, um, and discuss legislative updates and things of that nature. I also attended the Union County, um, Educational Services Commission meeting on September 4th, and I'm not going to go over that, that's really lengthy. It, they have a lot of services, um, at Lambert Middle Academy, Hillcrest South, Hillcrest North, so if you could go on the website and get the download, everything is right there. Finally, I'm going to, um, address a few things that's going on at Soul Foster Innovations. Um, I went with Ms. Cleary and Mr. Walters today, and we did a complete walkthrough, which lasted about a good hour, um, and, um, I'm happy to report that the maintenance crew, uh, crews their schedule to, um, do more repairs next week. They replacing the vents that was on order. Some of the tiles, they have vents in them, and you just can't take out the vent and replace the tile, you have to order a whole unit, correct? Um, so that's about to be, um, delivered and replaced. Um, the broken soap dispensers are being replaced. Um, it's back on schedule for all the bathrooms to be repaired and updated. And, the second floor, that is. And then, um, and those, that's going to begin the renovations for the second floor bathrooms in October, right? Okay. The girls will be done first, and then the boys. Um, the water fountains, the new spout for the water fountains will, um, they're on order, and they will be installed as soon as they are arrived. During the walkthrough, we checked the water fountains, you know, we took six of water, um, and we're fine, the water fountains are operational, you know. Underneath, you can see where there is new hardware, it's new lines, uh, brand new, some of them still have the, um, I want to say the manufacturer's name on a piece of papers. And the lead testing was done on the fountains, the water supply, so you could go on the website, the, uh, district's website, and you'll be able to find results there. All the water in the fountains is same in the, um, schools in the district, so that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Patrick?
Uh, two things I forgot to mention earlier, um, Grohl Coats, it's a club that's going on right now at both middle schools, Soul and McManus. Um, if you do have daughters that are in Soul and McManus, I'd probably suggest them to show interest and possibly join those clubs, because it's, coding is the future. It's a technology of the future, just, I mean, they start early and have fun with it, it could be a career for them in the future, for, for sure. And, um, nothing that's going on, the competitive gaming league, uh, esports is, area is fully constructed and complete, and there's two additional school districts that I follow our lead with doing this and joining, including Randolph and Morris Plains.
Okay, thank you, Tom, anything else?
Um, first, welcome back to the school year. I had the privilege of attending a few back to school nights. I have to say, the schools looked great. Um, it was nice to see a lot of parents come out and the smiles on the staff faces. To the drivers, just a reminder that when buses come to a stop and their stop sign is out, traffic must stop in both directions. It is a ticketed offense if you are caught. Uh, whether you see children or not, it doesn't matter. Once that stop sign is out, please stop both directions. Um, also, it's the crossing guards' job to protect and make sure our children are crossing safely. So if they have their stop sign out, if you see them in the middle of the road, please follow their rules as well. Uh, they work very hard in all kinds of weather to make sure those kids get to school safely. Also, thank you to the school principals that allowed Linden Library and for the back to school night. and for the back to school nights. Because of that, we signed up over 300 new patrons this year. So we hope to make this an annual event. Thank you very much.
To Jett, I just want to add one last thing to my report. During my tour at Soul, I have to give a really groovy shout out to this teacher. I just met him today. He's really awesome. His classroom is so cool. Mr. Macha?
Maka.
Maka. You gotta go visit his classroom. He has a stage in there, he has lights. He has like nice chairs for the kids to feel comfortable. Not all kids can project their voice. They have stage fright, and he, his classroom is so inviting and comfortable. I really wanted to stay in there today. So I just wanted to give him one of the most grooviest shout outs. And job well done. Keep up the great work.
I, just one last thing for me. I'd just like to say a couple compliments to Bristol, to Cleary, to your staff, to Gayle, to your staff, every principal, every big thing, supervise. Director, secretary this summer. When you open school, and when the rollout comes in June, where all the kids are rolling over, the sevens go to the eights, the seniors go out, break cake come in. You have 6,000 students that you have to schedule. It's like a jigsaw puzzle. And hopefully, over the summer, when school opens up, everything matches. When your son or daughter goes into school, they have a schedule. When they go to fourth period, they have a teacher. And believe me when I'm telling you, it is so difficult. And one person does not do it, five people don't do it. Everybody does it. And hopefully, everything matches up. And again, the opening of school was great. Because, believe me, it is a very difficult process. And sometimes, in the first day of school, as an administrator, especially a superintendent, you cross your fingers. And you know why it worked out very well? And my compliments to your staff, and to your staff, and to every administrator in this, and secretaries, because believe me, I know, the secretaries are the ones that sit there with a blood and guts of a walk race and smoke when it all finishes up. But again, thank you so much for a great opening, and hopefully, everybody will have a great school year. And with that, to all the comments, which absolutely.
I just want to point out, we have one of our new hires in the audience tonight. I only see one, but I would just like to congratulate Mr. Matthew Shike. He was appointed tonight as one of our new PE teachers. I'll see him back there, so just wish you all the best.
I just wanted to thank also Mr. Maran, the Director of Maintenance. Everything that possibly could have went wrong in every building this summer went wrong. And he did an excellent job of convincing staff to make sure that we were open for day one. So thank you, Mr. Maran.
Okay, with that, applause to me. Ask for motion to adjourn. Motion, second.
Second.
All of us say aye?
Aye.
All of us have a great evening and see you at the end of our tour.